Watch out, sir.
Tomorrow I think it says it rains. I got two more notes the other day. We got yours and there's one more somewhere.
Somebody was bouncing about one somewhere, I heard.
Sillyness. I have to talk to mine and we Jefferson.
Mayor, we still have to, we're still, we're coming out of executive, executive session with special meetings though. To discuss those pages. Or vote on the pages.
Alright, thank you everyone. I've come out of the executive meeting. And wanted to do a vote on the paving. For the city of Darlington, for consistency, we agreed to paving contract, agreement that we had between Evans Construction, pavement and industrial pavement. And follow the discussion on that before you.
Probably the worst question, Mr. Mayor, we're splitting that original industrial paving job that we awarded them in September. We're splitting it between Evans pavement and industrial pavement.
We had discussed possibly moving Elma Circle, if you want to leave it the way it was, it is on the paper where Evans pavement would get, the roads get highlighted for them, Bowens Street, Darlington Street, Trail Street, Ford Street, Dutton Lane, Court Street, Joey and Ennis and Lockin Drive would go into Evans pavement.
What is that amount for?
And also Bonaparte Drive.
Same Evans, and what is the amount for?
You got a total of one hundred forty-two thousand three hundred dollars. Now, I have one question. Lockin Drive, we had said originally that we were just gonna pave, we're gonna pave it, then we came back and said we're going to.
Patch.
Patch it. With what you have right here at this moment, you've got fifty-seven thousand dollars for Evans to pave.
That's paving.
Paved already.
Yeah, because patching, you're gonna have to pave it eventually. If you go ahead, if you patch it, you're gonna be paving it in a year or two.
There was a discussion on that, so that's included paving the four roads.
Yeah.
And also like I said, Bonaparte Drive. So the total roads that he would have would be one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine roads, a total of one hundred forty-three thousand three hundred dollars, correct?
That's right.
The other roads would go to industrial paving, which is Richmond Street, Country Club Drive, Green Drive, Tease Circle, Hansworth Alley, Elma Circle, Henry Street. Those streets would go, a total of.
Jeffrey and Weston.
Jeffrey and Weston are going to be paid by the.
Jeffrey and Weston are known by state.
Or have already been paid by the state. And that would be a total for industrial paving, approved of two hundred thirty-six thousand seven hundred sixty dollars and sixty-five cents. The combination total of three hundred eighty thousand sixty dollars and sixty-five cents.
That's right.
I'd like to motion that we approve these two contracts for Evans pavement and industrial paving. Can I just state the amount?
I would.
Okay, I'd like to, um, motion to approve Evans pavement for one hundred and forty-three thousand three hundred dollars. And also motion to approve industrial paving for a total contract of two hundred thirty-six thousand seven hundred sixty dollars and sixty-five cents. For a total bid of three hundred and eighty thousand sixty dollars with sixty-five cents.
Just like to, if you would add to your motion that we have city managers sign these contracts on behalf of the city and that we actually have written contracts rather than verbal contracts.
I'd also like to add that we would have the manager have a written contract signed on by the city manager.
I would second that.
Mr. Nelson?
Hi.
Elaine?
Hi.
Brian? Spackes?
Hi.
Sigerson? Okay, all in favor? Thank you. Motion's passed. The other item that we've talked about in the executive session about annexation agreement, Darlington Raceway, it will be tabled. So we will not vote on that tonight. All right, thank you everybody tonight. We're gonna start our city council meeting for November the tenth. Which was supposed to start at six-thirty, but we're a little late. It started after the executive session. Pastor is about here tonight, so, okay, we'll move right by you here. We'll say a word prayer. If you have any thought, thank you for this day. Thank you for all you blessed as you've done for us and given us. Thank you for bringing our city together in order and for the city council give us the direction that we need to go. And we'll lead by example and do as we should for the city, the citizens of Oregon. Thank you for this time we have together. Rest bless us, hallelujah, we say you do. In Jesus' name I pray, amen. Thank you everybody standing in the presence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Do you have a motion for approval of minutes of the city council meeting for ten-six twenty-five?
I make a motion that we approve the minutes of our city council meeting of October sixth, two thousand twenty.
All in favor? All in favor, Mr. Nelson? Brian?
Hi.
Spackes?
Hi.
Sigerson? Okay, hi. Thank you, motion carries. Alright, do I have a motion for approval of meeting for the agenda for tonight?
I'll make a motion that we approve for the next meeting.
I'll second that.
All in favor, Mr. Nelson?
Hi.
Hi.
Mr. Lane?
Spackes?
Yeah.
So, thank you. Hi. Alright, um, reported by standing committees, Darlington Downtown Realization Association, Mrs. Rock.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The DERA held our final monthly members breakfast for two thousand twenty on Thursday, October twenty-ninth. A record crowd of businesses, old and new, represented. We will return to having those monthly meetings on the fourth Thursday of the month in January of two thousand twenty-one. We skipped the holiday season, avoided the holidays. But we are still working. Our annual holiday shop Darlington contest kicks off this month. We encourage folks to shop at five different businesses between Thanksgiving and Christmas. Send in your receipts and take your money and have a chance to win one of three one-hundred-dollar crap cash prizes. And of course, the more you shop, the more entries you can enter into the contest. The idea is to have residents explore Darlington shops, especially those they've never entered, as owners and managers work hard to stock a variety of unique items. You can see more information about the contest at buildupdarlington.org/shop Darlington. The DERA is also partnering with the Darlington Rescue Squad to hold a Christmas festival from four to seven p.m. Sunday, December sixth, on the public square to give visitors and residents a chance to enjoy some shopping while enjoying the Darlington Rescue Squad Christmas parade and Darlington Kiwanis Club Carol lighting service downtown. The parade begins at four o'clock at Fitness World Gins and comes to the square, where the city tree will be lit during the Darlington Kiwanis Club Carol lighting service at approximately six o'clock. The Darlington Industrial Association and Kiwanis Club gather speakers and musicians for the event to celebrate the Christmas season. The Christmas festival will feature vendor spaces around the square from four to seven to encourage folks to stay after the Christmas parade for these activities. We are also making plans for the Return of the Taste Darlington, a Mother's Day race, and more. In the meantime, we continue to promote Darlington's businesses on social media and through our news alert system each week. Continually updating our webpage, buildupdarlington.org, where you can sign up to receive those news alerts on your phone, via text, or directly to your email. Any questions?
What's the date for the parade?
Sunday, December sixth.
Um, where's the lineup for the parade?
Fitness World.
So, uh, the floats, what time should our council members be down there at the lineups?
Oh, we have not had any float requests yet. We have to have three to four for the float company to bring the floats here. A lot of people that have requested floats in the past are not able to do that this year. So I'm just waiting to see if we have any floats available.
What time?
Can I enter my golf cart?
What time? Oh, you can, I mean, if you know somebody with, a lot of people are making their own floats this year, actually.
Can I have a golf cart? Can I dress a golf cart up?
Yeah, do anything you all do.
You have a competition for the golf cart?
Yes, we are having a golf cart competition.
Oh, really?
Mm-hmm. Christmas themed.
Do y'all have anything on the, um, on y'all's website, like Facebook site I can share?
Yes, on the Darlington Rescue Squad Christmas parade Facebook page. We also have online registration there.
And it has it for the golf cart competition stuff?
Yes, mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you, Lisa. Alright, um, the greater orders in Chamber of Commerce will be, so Nancy Matthews will be, Anna DeWitt.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We're here to report on the Fright Fest that was held on Halloween at the square. It was a success. We believe we had well over five thousand people. However, that was over five hours. We had people coming and going all day long, so the crowds were not that big. We did truck or treat, we had rides, we had bingo with prizes that our city manager called bingo for us. The Tickets from Cops initiative was awesome this year. We were able to raise over fifteen hundred dollars and we were able to give away four hundred free tickets to the kids that attended the festival. So we were real proud of that. This was a one-time thing for us. We will go back to Freedom Fest next year, in which we were hoping to have on the square and bring more business downtown to Darlington. December the third, we will have a ribbon cutting for Bethay Baptist Retirement Home's new facility. I'll have the time shortly, once we confirm that with her. And also, instead of having the tape toast, the toast of Darlington, the chamber is now gonna move towards the Mayor's Masquerade Ball. So it will be held on New Year's Eve. We do not have a lot of details yet, but we noticed that Darlington doesn't have anything for adults to do on New Year's Eve, so we're gonna try and have it, it'll be in the toast theme with food vendors there to provide food. But you'll buy your tickets, we're looking for a venue now, and then you can come up in masks. It's called a ball, but it will be more country club casual dress. So we're looking to have that to replace the, um, the toast of Darlington. Do you have any questions?
Okay, thank you. Firework show was phenomenal.
Yes, it was.
Alright, very good, thank you.
Firework show was phenomenal. There was a lot of conflicts about that fireworks show that I've seen. Lot of phone calls about that fireworks.
It was, it was a fantastic show. Alright, citizens wishing to appear before council? Anything, Lisa?
We didn't receive any written comments.
Alright, thank you. Unfinished business, uh, second reading ordinance, twenty twenty dash twenty, uh, the lease for the Carnegie Library to the Darlington County. Howard? Mr. Mayor, do you have a question? Mr. Mayor, do you have a question?
Uh, yes, sir, I just, I don't know further, but let's hear what Howard's got to say for.
Okay.
Darlington County asked that we change, Darlington County wants Carnegie Library available for community meetings to change, to make available for City of Darlington, for City of Darlington meetings.
Can we use the word that one, set of meetings?
Say it again?
Darlington County wants to make Carnegie Library available for City of Darlington meetings.
Not general community?
Not general community meetings. They, they won't, they're gonna have something in that facility that's not necessarily gonna be conducive to having just available just for meetings. It would be available possibly in evenings for meetings, but not necessarily during the daytime. So they feel like that, just saying community meetings would mean that if they have some type of activity going on during the business day, they have to stop everything for that. That's, that's the concern they've got. They, they have a specific use plan for the building during the daylight business hour.
Mr. Carter?
How would they view, uh, after-hours community meetings?
They're, they're, they're okay with that, but like I say, they, with what they have planned during the day, they don't want it available during the day for meetings.
I think the reason, Lisa, they didn't say community, they wanted to change it to community, that's my understanding was he didn't want it to be just for the open public.
Right, but you want the city. The City of Darlington is what he wanted to say.
Can we, instead of saying city meetings, can we change it to city events? Because there may be an event you're having, it's not a meeting, we may want to access and use the property.
But do they sound like they don't want events?
Well, but they don't want community events, but a city-sponsored event, I think is.
This is gonna be a meeting room, I mean, it's like we.
That meeting is meetings.
Yeah, so, does that, does anybody have a problem with that? It'll give us the opening to be able to use it if we have a interest in the future.
Is this, when is it gonna be, is this gonna be a meeting room, correct?
Yeah, it's just, it's just an area for, it's like a large panel with fifteen to twenty chairs, that's what they're top looking at.
Yes, I would, I mean, firstly, I would.
Alright, well, I mean, you could have wine and cheese, you could have something.
That doesn't require a meeting.
Can we not just say city use?
Yeah, thank you. I would like to change the language in number one. So we're gonna go, we're gonna go ahead and say city use?
I don't know.
Yeah, yeah, I would think so. City use is good, thank you.
Darlington County will be financially responsible for all renovations to the Carnegie Library. I think it should be responsible for all renovations and maintenance, because maintenance is not necessarily the same thing as renovations, and I don't want to to fall down maintaining the building. I don't think they would intend to, but I just think that putting renovations and maintenance would ensure that everybody's on the same page.
Okay, maybe I'm.
If you go down to the third from last line, the bullet point that says Darlington County will maintain property and liability insurance.
Yeah.
So there, man, that's assuming of maintain property insurance, I apologize.
So what were you talking about?
I mean, I think you're saying, it's saying, already saying that they're gonna maintain the property and liability insurance, but I would think that's what they mean in that.
Yeah, I messed up. I was thinking that that was answering his question, but it's actually, I just, I misinterpreted the sentence, I apologize, y'all. So the first line needs to say Darlington County will financially, will be financially responsible for all renovations and maintenance to the Carnegie Library?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. That's what I, I couldn't understand which one you were asking, because it looked like it was all, it's saying they're gonna be financially responsible. But you wanna add and maintenance.
Need a motion?
I'd like to motion that we approve. Changes, I'm sorry, y'all. I'd like to motion that we approve second reading ordinance, twenty twenty dash twenty, lease Carnegie Library to Darlington County. With the changes to the contract include, the first sentencing changing to Darlington County will be financially responsible for all renovations and maintenance to the Carnegie Library. And the, and the fifth bullet point down, I'd like to change it to Darlington County will make the Carnegie Library available for city use.
I'll second that motion.
You wanna put it, the city use after hours?
No, sir. The Darlington County will make the Carnegie Library available for city use.
They're not gonna make it available to us during daylight hours.
Well, previously, we didn't have a specification on times, and they were fine with that. I think we all assumed that they're gonna be using the eight to five. If they were more specification in there, I think we can authorize the city manager to include eight to five, but I don't think we need to limit ourselves either.
Well, just not go ask, wouldn't go ask for what, I wouldn't, wouldn't want somebody coming into, because they're gonna make use of the building, I wouldn't want the county coming into our building and say, you know, we let you use it, we want to use it now, and disrupt our normal operations.
I'm just going on what their concerns were, and the only concern they have is community meetings, but if y'all wanna add after city use, or we can change the line to Darlington County will make the Carnegie Library available for city use after hours?
But isn't that what they're doing now? They're, they're letting us know what their concerns are, that they want, they want this, um, to specify after business hours, you know?
We could split it.
I mean, after, no.
Provided, uh, their normal operations.
I'm fine with that.
Yes, let's do that.
So Darlington County will make the Carnegie Library available for city use, provided it does not interfere with their operations.
With their normal operations.
Provided.
Normal. After, you said after.
Interfere with their normal operations.
We could use it during the time, during daylight hours, if it didn't interfere. But if they had something going on, then we would.
Right.
All the times.
Sounds good.
Do we have a second?
I initially seconded it, it's off of it again.
Can you say it again?
Yes.
All in favor? President? Mrs. Spackes? Right. Special. Finished business, uh, public hearing ordinance. Public hearing ordinance, twenty twenty dash twenty-one, commercial refuse container fees.
This is the one right here.
Please, was there anything on that? On the public hearing?
We did not receive any comments.
No comments received. Alex?
I heard.
Okay. Alright, so no comments were made on the public hearing ordinance of the commercial, of the twenty twenty dash twenty-one commercial refuse container fees. Alright, unfinished business, uh, second reading ordinance, twenty twenty dash twenty-one, commercial refuse container rates. We have a motion to.
I said we did not get a fee schedule that we could attach. Do you have those fee schedules or not?
Do you have a fee schedule?
Yeah, please, pull it back.
I'll back.
Instead of paying it back.
I'd like.
Any discussion?
I'd like to motion that we approve second reading ordinance, twenty twenty dash twenty-one, commercial refuse container rates.
Second.
You have a second? Mr. Nelson, second?
I second.
Captain Lane, second? All in favor, Mr. Nelson?
Hi.
Spackes?
Hi.
Sigerson? Sigerson, aye? Aye. Motion carries, thank you. Alright, under new business?
Just for comment, I noticed that the changes are in our handout, they are separated from the proposed order.
Under new business, uh, business license enforcement, um. Sheila?
Good evening, Mayor and Council, and with everyone as well. We come before you to propose a change to a couple of the business license ordinances, specifically twenty-two dash thirty-five, which is police investigate, to investigate, it gives the police department the power to investigate, um, business license infractions. And so I was talking to Charles Bailey, who is the fire marshal for the city, and he does inspections for life safety issues. And there wasn't a lot of recourse as far as business licenses. He's already out there for the police department to go out there on a separate inspection and, and then there wasn't a lot of ability for him specifically to do anything if there were violations. He would have to call me and I'd have to come out. And so it kind of made sense to us that we change the ordinance where the police, they're not there on, on a regular basis for, at businesses, they have a lot of other things to do within the city, they have a lot of other demands that, you know, and if we're there already, I'm there for different code enforcement issues, he's there for fire marshal issues, it would make sense to change the ordinance to read that the building official, fire marshal, investigate violations as it pertains to business licenses. So then we started looking at that, and it made also sense that if there is a violation, if they haven't had, I think Charles said he went to an inspection the other day, and it hadn't been, it'd been years since the fire extinguishers had been fixed and lights and different things, and, you know, we've gone into places and there's ridiculous amount of, you know, maintenance issues and code violations as, you know, as it pertains to maintenance property and, and there wasn't, you know, there's some recourse for us. You know, we can shut, shut it down. Some business license hadn't been renewed in, in looking at that. And so, you know, this just adds another way for us to be able to protect our citizens, to make sure that they're safe when they go into places, that there's fire extinguishers that have been serviced on a regular basis. There's fire suppression systems that have been serviced on a regular basis, that, you know, the IFC, as, as, you know, Charles looks at it, you know, he's able to go through and make sure that, you know, we're not in violation. Because there's a lot of things that are going on. So, um, giving us the ability to suspend a business license until such time that it's, you know, brought into compliance. You know, it affords him that opportunity to do that. You know, if I go in there and there's things that, that I've seen, it affords me the opportunity to do that. You know, if I go in there and there's things that, that I've seen, it affords me the opportunity to do that, and then if it doesn't, if it's not brought into compliance, and usually we give them thirty days, and if there's extenuating circumstances, we can still extend that, um, the city manager still has the ability to revoke the ci, the business license altogether. Any questions?
Okay, yeah, just for me to, for the, the snow in the process here, okay. What you were asking, I mean, your office is the one that, okay, you give the, uh, a business license of.
No ma'am.
No?
So, no ma'am, no ma'am. My, my office does not give out business licenses. So what, so what happens is a new business comes to town, or there's an existing business and there's a new business owner. When that happens, they have to get a certificate of occupancy, which means the fire marshal and I go out to the, to the structure and look to make sure that if it's, if it's a new business, if it's a new structure, then I do it on my own, with the exception of if it's restaurant related or there's a fire suppression system, then the fire marshal comes with me. Um, so we go there and do code inspections to make sure that it is with either existing structure code compliant or new structure. Um, and then once they pass their inspections, then they're able to get their business license.
Okay. And then this, what you're proposing here now is enforcement, enforcement of the, of the, the, their business license.
It's the.
Whatever you, the, the codes for them to operate.
Right, so what we're proposing is because every year they have to renew their business license.
Okay.
Okay, and in, in times past, inspections haven't been done, um.
Yearly?
As often as they should be. So now, since we have, um, Charles Bailey is the fire marshal and, and he's taken over safety and he's doing these inspections to make sure that all of, um, the structures are inspected on a regular basis. So when he goes in there, um, one of, one of the things that should be asked, but he hasn't, he hasn't had the, um, authority to ask it is, where's your business license? And if they don't have it, he doesn't have the authority to do anything about it. Um, so now he can go in there and say, where should, you know, let us, let us see your business license, we can figure out, you know, make sure their occupancy loads are correct. Um, make sure that all, you know, all his, the fire extinguishers, if there's any code violations beyond fire, you know, then he can call me, we can come out, take a look, see what's going on. Give them an inspection report, give them the ability to fix themselves, and if they don't, and if there's an extenuating circumstances why they can't, um, we can extend that. If they're, if they're not, then we can suspend their business license, shut them down until such time that they're able to bring themselves into compliance. Um, Charles has mostly the li, uh, life safety issues with the fire, um, and then structural and, and other things, and then our own city ordinances.
Okay, so as it stands now, it's the police department that has been doing that, this ordinance does now give the fire, the fire marshals the, uh, the authority to, to be able to do that, where it should have been all the time.
Yes, ma'am.
It should have been, that, that's the way it should have been, so we're just really trying to get this.
Yes, ma'am.
Sounds.
So.
Chief Washington.
I'm sorry, counsel.
Sure, you may approach.
Um, and for the record, we have no objection to that, um. When the law was written during that time, that was the way that it was being done, was that the police department would go into businesses and, and check the business licenses, if the business license were not renewed, then it would be the police department's responsibility to go and enforce it. Um, since then, the rule of thumb is that if a jurisdiction is large enough to have a codes enforcement office, then it should be the responsibility of the codes enforcement office. Um, I called quite a few, um, different jurisdictions across the state who do have codes enforcement offices, and it's their codes enforcement office who does enforce, um, the, uh, business license, i- anything dealing with the business license as, as it relates to the renewals or any infractions that may take place that are violations of the business license. Uh, what we have, um, um, said to Ms. Marie, that if she runs into a situation where she's not comfortable going into a business, or there's some reason that she feels unsafe, then all she has to do is let us know, and we will have one of our, um, police officers to accompany her or to accompany, um, the assistant fire chief, well, fire marshal, excuse me, to make sure, um, that, that they're safe. So a- as far as the police department is concerned, we have no objections. Um, I told her that we would get together and, and assist her with writing the ordinance if need be.
Okay, sounds good. I'm satisfied.
So as I understand, um, from what I was thinking, shouldn't every business have their business license displayed, displayed for the public to be able to see?
Yes, ma'am, it's written on the business license that it's supposed to be displayed in a conspicuous place.
Or are you saying you're running into businesses in Johnson that's not displaying their license?
I'm, well, what I'm saying is I haven't gone out there to do, because it wasn't the duty of the codes enforcement office previously.
What she's saying is, is she basically does the building official stuff.
I know what you're saying.
I go in, I go in and do a fire marshal inspection, which is completely opposite of her, and it don't make sense for me to go in and do that inspection without checking the business license.
Right, and, right, to see if it's legit.
Right, I'm going into business of businesses on a regular basis, she's not going in.
That's what I am.
So it don't make sense for me to pick up the phone, have to call her, let her come over there and do that when I'm already into business, and I can take care of it.
And Ms. Beckus, Ms. Beckus, to your question, the fire mar, neither the fire marshal nor the, nor the codes enforcement had the authority to, um, question or investigate regarding business licenses, that was solely the responsibility of the police department.
That wasn't the question. Again, the question I was asking was, have you been into a businesses where you haven't seen the license displayed?
Oh, yes, ma'am, I go, as a citizen, I go into businesses and I see that it's not displayed, that, yes, ma'am, that's a, that's regular.
And I've also seen something.
That, that was all the question.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Calls us, you'd immediately investigate, gotcha.
So would that also, would that also pertain to, for example, um, maybe on the weekend? If you see somebody that's doing a roof or something, how would you do, how would you handle that?
We could also do the same thing, I, I think that would fall under another ordinance.
Because it may not be, maybe a roofing company or an individual working for a roofing company or something that's not, um, um, in a building.
Yes, ma'am.
Mrs. Beckus, my understanding, I may answer this.
Sure.
My understanding with, uh, my friend, Steve Bucker, Southeast Longyear, uh, he doesn't have a building, he works for lawnmowers. And he has stopped at other counties and cities, uh, and, uh, whoever they have that has inspected them will walk up and say, do you have a business license? So to answer your question, if some, if, I would feel like if Charles rides by and sees somebody building something, he then should have the authority to say, do you have a permit? And also, do you have a business license, um, in the same question?
And to answer, um, to answer your question also, Ms. Beckus, um, we don't issue, um, permits without first checking to ensure they have a city business license, so contractors have to have an active city business license and an active state contractor's license in order to be, um, issued upon it. So if they're.
Can I finish your question?
Sure.
What, what I was leading to was, so if you ran into somebody over the weekend, oh, that's doing some contracting work, or, or that, that, that you ask for a license, that he don't have a license.
What?
What would you do then? Would you say they have, what, what would you do?
I personally would get all of their contact information, um, I have the ability, because I have shortcuts on my phone to check to see if they have contractor's licenses. Um, and if, and if I feel like something is going, one, if they don't have a permit, we have a problem, I mean, I've had people.
Would you shut them down?
That's why I shut them down, I stop, I stopped their job immediately, I stopped jobs during the week, I stopped jobs, I ride by, people don't realize that I ride my bike on the weekend, couple hours a day. And I have stopped jobs, I stopped, pulled up on my bike, got off my bike and said, what are you doing? Um, so, yeah, on the weekends, jobs get stopped. I've had people call me, um, because they didn't, not only were, were they working, but they didn't feel like they were doing the work properly, and so I come out and look at that. So, yeah, it, stuff happens on the weekend as well, yes, ma'am.
Thank you for letting me complete the question before you try to answer.
Sure, absolutely.
Counsel on the back, is if I might add, oh, I'm sorry, sir.
I got it, and this is just something I think I saw in the paper, skimming and didn't sit down and read it, but I understand the piece of legislation on getting businesses licenses have been proposed by Jay Jordan over in Florence that I think has now been approved by the governor, so who is responsible, if that is correct, who's responsible for checking the new legislation against our current city ordinances relating to how people go about getting business licenses?
We have until January first, twenty twenty-two to put that into, um.
Okay.
Uh, order effective order.
Okay.
So we have some time before we go to something else.
So the business licenses are going to go to the state now?
No, it's just, it's a business license standardization bill that passed, where there's going to be one class code for all businesses statewide and a standard, uh, time that you come in and get a business license, and a standard time that all cities will bill for business license. It won't be, somebody builds in May, somebody builds in June, somebody builds in January, it's all will be one time, so the contractor in Aiken and the contractor in Florence and the contractor in Warwick and Darlington all have the same dates. It's, it's just very much something that municipal association's been working on for years with the State Chamber of Commerce and, and different, uh, building association groups and contractor groups. They've, uh, taken probably the last dozen years to craft this, so it's, it's a, it's a big deal.
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to add one additional thing, um, to, uh, counsel on the back, this is, um, concerned. A, a lot of it will, will depend on how the ordinance is written, uh, enforcement powers can be given, um, through the ordinance to whomever needs to have them, and whatever those powers are can be given through the ordinance. And so, uh, a lot, that's why I was, when, when she and I discussed this on yesterday, um, I, I, you know, suggested that myself, um, the fire marshal and the fire chief, the four of us, sit down and, and the city manager as well, the five of us, and sit down and discuss those, discuss that ordinance to, to make sure that those powers and how they're, and who has the authority to do that i- is thoroughly discussed and thoroughly explained, but also written out, so there's no misunderstanding once that ordinance is, uh, is issued.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion?
Is there any action needs to be taken on that?
Well, if y'all are alright with what was presented, then I will present it for first reading at the December first meeting.
Okay.
Well, I would like to see the ordinance, if we, y'all, move off the ordinance.
Before the meeting? Before the meeting?
Yes, before the meeting. So you can just email me a copy before the meeting.
If there's a copy of that ordinance on the back page.
Well, you're going to redo the ordinance, right?
Yeah, it's the new ordinance.
It's already explained out in that ordinance, who will have power, who won't have power.
The last page of the, the.
Page three.
Well, I'm actually back with it, I don't know. What else we?
We just wanted to present for your discussion tonight, for you to look at and have the first reading at the next meeting, because sometimes we present a first reading without everybody having really seen it or looked at it, so.
I got.
Have time to have due consideration of.
I think that needs to be changed on the ordinance, we can still change it right now.
Okay, very good.
So the ordinance is not set, so if they decide to change, it makes some crease.
I saw we had first reading on the bottom of it.
We have a motion for, to approve the, uh, first reading of, um, business license enforcement.
I think you'll be back on.
First, first reading.
The next one, first.
Sorry, December first.
December. Alright. Any further discussion? Okay. Alright, thank you. Alright, uh, new business, uh, asphalt trailer purchase.
Alright, the proposal that I just gave y'all was the most recent, uh, from ISG. They wanted to submit it in the, um, in the packet, was the original one that we got from ISG. And that was based off the North Carolina Sheriff's Association and their discount, the new unit you got is based off of the, um, the new SC DOT, uh, contract discount. And I just received that, um, end of last week, I believe it was, and it was, he had already put the packet together, so that's why I'm handing it out tonight.
So this is the procurement list now?
Sir?
So this is, just for clarity, this is a South County DOT contract, thus we don't have to dip it out?
No, sir. Then we want to dip it out, no. State just bought, I think they bought about thirty units throughout the state.
Sir?
Um, I have a better price. The, so the first one that you had from ISG, you can disregard it, and we'll go through it real quick if you want to, um, the new one.
Okay.
We also have the one from Jet Vac. I know the, one from ISG is the yellow unit that we de, uh, demoed on Chest, uh, Chestnut Street.
Okay.
The one from Jet Vac was the, uh, step unit, um, I think, Mr. Seagulls and Mayor and Ms. Beckus, y'all were the only three there for that demo, correct? So y'all saw that unit, but.
I want to.
You weren't there? I thought you were there, I'm sorry. Okay, so we just had two council members that were there for that one. Um, it was a nice unit, but if you look, look at the specs, it's basically the same size, it doesn't have all the, um, extra stuff. Um, the one that DOT specked out, it has some extra lights and some extra equipment on it, not a lot, but it does have some extra stuff on it. Um, and the unit that, uh, Jet Vac specked out, the total on it was sixty thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars. But if you take and compare apples to apples, from ISG, we're looking at, um, theirs with the contract is forty thousand, five hundred and ten dollars and twelve cent. Now, then when you look under optional items, DOT did not spec theirs out with a, um, a plate, vibratory plate temp. Um, we did spec, or asked for that to be an option.
Forty thousand?
Sir?
You said it was forty thousand?
Forty thousand, yeah, because the DOT, the DOT, or the price for the unit itself is forty thousand, eleven dollars and twenty-five cent. And then you take away the forty-five, oh, one thirteen, which is the discount.
You look right under the red and see the discount.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, so that comes to forty thousand, five hundred and ten dollars and twelve cent. And then we have three different options up under, one of them is the, uh, vibratory compactor plate with storage, which is thirty-one eighty-nine eighty-eight. Um, I think Councilman Bryant was, weren't you asking about the infrared, which is good for potholes, fiber ribbon, asphalt, little small areas where you can sit that infrared plate over it, heat it up, loosen it back up and use, instead of having to cut that area out and replace a whole area, you can do like a, a five to five area with just minimal asphalt, um, so it saves you money on the asphalt. Um, now that unit's nine thousand, ninety-eight hundred and eighty-two dollars. And then they have the shipping and handling fee for cranking it up, getting here and everything else, so if you add the, if we took, if we decided to go with the three, or, or the two options, which is the vibratory, uh, compactor plate with storage and the infrared, uh, unit with the deck, with the shipping and handling and everything, we're looking at fifty-five thousand, one eighty-two, nine, ten. Um, so without the infrared would be forty-five thousand, three hundred. I think infrared is not something we would use every day, but I think it would come in handy especially around potholes, I mean, not potholes, but around manhole cover covers and that kind of stuff, so.
The area, this is a, I'm sorry, apologize for interrupting you, the area, this is the bottom of Cashwood Ferry, for instance, right before the bridge on the right-hand side, there's the main, or there's the, um, stormwater drain, and it has raised asphalt, it's a really bad bump, but also holds water every time it rains. So is this a situation where that?
Yeah, you can go in there and heat it up with the infrared and just kind of rake it down and then repack it, and not have to cut it out and re, you know, resurface. So, I mean, like I said, it has its pros and cons, it's not something that would be used every day, but it would save us money. Um, because we're, if you had a manhole. Because we're, if you had a manhole riser that you had to repair around, you can heat it up and do it with three or two or three scoops of asphalt versus cutting the whole thing out and using a yard of asphalt. So it's gonna save you money, and it'd save you time as well. So I guess what we need to decide is, you know, we want just the unit and we want the the options with it. And, but like I said, comparing apples to apples, we're forty thousand five hundred and ten dollars and twelve cents versus sixty thousand eight hundred and forty dollars and thirty cents. Both of them are are well-built units. The DOT spec kind of beefed up the trailer a little bit and the the dunk portion of the trailer. So I think we would be fine with either one of them, so. That's that's, I think, how much y'all want.
Do we already have a roller?
We have a ride-on vibratory roller. But my suggestion was, whenever we did the demo of the unit on Chestnut, we we used a, or demoed a walk-behind vibratory roller. And I would say, my back was sore the next day, that thing would work. So we've got a roller, a ride-on vibratory roller, so we can take that on a trailer when we're gonna do the asphalt repair and then use the plate temp, to me, would be a lot more, maybe just be a better unit for what we've got, especially since we already have a ride-on vibratory roller.
Now, with going with the ride-on and not buying, so what's your, there's two options. We can use what we got, carry two trailers, or we can buy the vibratory compactor and get away with not bringing an extra trailer, an extra roller.
There's, when you're doing a big, when you're doing a big repair, like we did on Hampton Street in the middle of the road, the ride-on is the way to go. When you're doing a small repair, the vibratory temp would be the way to go. So, yeah, you could put everything on one trailer, take one trailer out, take it off and, you know, have everything self-contained there. Also, one thing we did, we did add to this one that wasn't on the the unit that we demoed, was a tack system, where you could actually spray tack down. The tack, basically what the tack does is, when you go in there and you prep it like we did on Chestnut, you had bare dirt, bare rock up under, we didn't put any tack down. So you didn't seal it off from any moisture, which is put asphalt right on top of dirt. So moisture can can get in between the old asphalt and the original asphalt, and that can cause it to come back up eventually. But with the tack, you put that tack in there and that seals it off before you put the new asphalt in there, so the moisture won't get to it and cause it to come back up. But that one did not have the tack tank on it, but the unit, both units that we specked out through Jetback and through ISG, both of them had thirty-gallon tack tank. And the one that come, that's one of the options that DOT specked out on the unit from ISG also has a hand torch. So that if you have an area that's a little damp, you can take the hand torch and dry it out before you put asphalt on it. And that helps with sealing it as well. So you're gonna put fresh asphalt, virgin, what do you call it, virgin asphalt on top of wet surface.
All right, the ISG product is better built than Jetback.
Both of them are well-built. I'm not gonna say one's better than the other. There's some things that I looked at on the Step unit that I may have liked a little bit better versus the ISG. There's things that I looked at on the ISG, or it's actually the K and M unit, or KM unit. There's things that I liked on it that was better, that I liked better than the one with Step. Both of them are good units. One of the selling features that Step was trying to sell us on was they use a old jacketed liner inside the walls of it. I've talked to a couple of people and they said, the problem, only problem you'd have with that old jacketed liner is if that jacket starts leaking in between the walls. You don't have any idea if it's leaking, now you're gonna have hot and cold spots. Because where it's leaking, it's not flowing fluid like it should, and you will have cold spots. So, you know, like I said, there's pros and cons to vote. So for the money, I think we're better off with the K and M. I can't see where there's twenty thousand dollars difference in the units.
Who's saying K and M, who's saying the ISG?
That's ISG, it's KM eight thousand.
And if we did vote to get this, we would take half of the purchase price out of his reserve account, which is around seventy thousand dollars right now, half from the sewer, water sewer department, because most of his work is preparing water and sewer cuts.
Make sure to think more of it.
Make sure you keep moving.
The dog demon, I was sure, Bill, was just gonna say that.
I mean, the water and sewer, I mean, that's, that's all I thought of.
You what?
I was thinking the water and sewer should pay sixty percent.
That's up, sure. But if something is needed, you you see the condition of a lot of our roads. And this helps us to get ahead of, instead of being reactive, helps us to be proactive.
Well, and one thing about the hot box, we can patch roads. I can take the dump truck and I can go get four tons, which is about three, three and a half yards of asphalt from the plant, virgin asphalt hot. During the hot months, during the summer months, you've got a vow of two and a half to three-hour working time. If you don't have it off of that truck within two and a half to three hours, you're gonna have to dig it all the way back up. I mean, it starts setting up, it gets hard. With this hot box, we can take and put four tons in it. And if we don't use all four tons today, and we need to come back tomorrow, or something happens and we can't get it all on the ground today, we can turn the burner on and let it heat overnight. And the next morning when we come back, we've still got hot virgin asphalt we can put on the burner. So you're not, the other way, if you don't have it in two and a half to three hours, we got to go dump it on the ground and try to figure out what we're gonna do with it at a later date. And the thing about it is, with this hot box, if you've got virgin asphalt on the ground that you hadn't used, you can break it up, put it back in this hot box and reclaim it and use it again. As long as it has not been compacted, it's considered virgin asphalt and you can put it back in the hot box.
Do you have to take it out if you go get four tons and put it in there and, you know, and use three tons a day? Do you have to take the other ton out or whatever?
You don't have to take it out. I mean, you don't wanna, you don't wanna leave it in there for months, but if you're gonna leave it in there for a week or something, you can leave it in there and then, you know, the, both of these boxes have timers on them. So if we're gonna plan on starting asphalt work at eight-thirty in the morning or eight o'clock in the morning, we can set it so that the burner comes on at three o'clock in the morning, and by the time you get there, it's reached three hundred degrees and is ready to go back on the burner. We can't do that if you use a dump truck.
So this is the one you want, though? You want this?
The KM eight thousand?
And you will not have?
I can't see spending an extra twenty thousand dollars. So, I mean, there's not that much difference between the two to spend an extra twenty thousand dollars.
Do you want it with the?
Yeah.
I think that we should look at the vibratory plate temp and the infrared. If we've got the money, I would say go ahead and invest in it. If not, maybe look at putting it in the budget and get it next year or whatever we need to do. But, I mean, I know if it was right now, that it would come in handy, that we could use it. But I don't wanna break the scene trying to buy a hot box.
Is that fifty-five one eighty-two or nineteen?
Fifty-five one eighty-two nineteen is what the total price was.
Looking at, and, okay.
And we could have it in probably, they say thirty to six, thirty to forty-five days, we told me today, that we could have it in probably three weeks.
All right.
We'll shoot, we'll start five minutes. Doing this, we was, we were coming over to the street sanitation reserve and the water sewer reserve.
I kind of thought we, all that demonstration, we kind of decided we was gonna get sucked.
I love the opinion that this is gonna be one of our better thoughts. I think this is gonna be huge.
You always gotta, we had three work breaks the other day against the, all the middle of the road. You constantly work breaks and you constantly got potholes. Have you ever worked with cold batch?
Well, cold batch doesn't last. Go look at Rixman Street, we put a hundred and twenty bags on Rixman Street probably five months ago.
I can't imagine, I can't imagine the man-hours that have been spent literally directly in front of my father's house on those one potholes for my entire life. I mean, the same potholes. So this is gonna be huge. Love to be able to fix a problem and I'll come back to it. So I'd like the most that we approved.
Thank you, I second.
Infrastructure Solutions Group for the total of all the optional items for fifty-five thousand one hundred and eighty-two dollars and nineteen cents. I'd also like to ask Councilman Barnes, we spent sixty-fourty with the water department since they're gonna be the main causes of the of the issue that this is gonna be fixing. And their pocketbook is more persuasive. Any seconds?
I'm just gonna take his money where he can't fix a fire.
Yes, sir.
Elaine, did you second?
Yes. Long time ago.
Mr. Mills?
Hi.
Ms. Backus?
Hi.
Milton?
Yes.
Siggers?
Hi.
Hi. A motion is carried for.
Pretty good.
Purchase of the K and M unit, the ISG unit, which is a quote number RD one-one dot one dot twenty-twenty, for a total of fifty-five thousand one hundred and eighty-two dollars and nineteen cents, which includes the additional options at the bottom of the updated sheet. With the purchase being from forty percent from the street sanitation and sixty percent from water and sewer. All right, thank you. All right, new business, see tree trimming report, please.
Thank you, Mary. As some council members have asked, I'm just gonna kind of explain how the tree trimming works around town. Pretty much if somebody has, we are responsible for all the street trees. So if there's a tree in the right-of-way, which is basically between the sidewalk and the street generally, then it's our tree. Some streets, every street's got a different right-of-way, so some extends on the other side of sidewalks, some obviously streets don't have sidewalks. So pretty much every street, somebody calls and complains about a tree, I'll go out there, see if it's our tree first. And if it is, then go to the next step. The next step would be you call the arborist. Our arborist is Mr. William Carter. He comes out and looks at the trees for us at no charge for this type of work. He'll come and say, this tree is healthy, or this tree needs to be trimmed, or this tree is a hazard of such degree that it needs to come down immediately, or not as immediately. So he'll give me that report. And then we go through to order that kind of work as needed. Most of the large trees, the large older oak trees that typically fall during storms, we don't have any equipment to trim those larger trees. So we don't have a bucket truck or anything like that, so we could pretty much get smaller, lower limbs, but we're not gonna be able to do a lot of the tree work unless all of it is farmed out. The beautification worker does go around and he'll do the trimming on and suffers and things on things that are much lower. But that's not the really expensive stuff. So, and that's what we're gonna be talking about today. Weather and storms pretty much eat up the tree trimming budget every year. Some years it will blow the budget by a lot, and some years it will just weaken. Most years we have about twenty thousand dollars for trees. This year, just in weather and hazard-related trees, we've already spent almost twelve thousand dollars of that firm. And that was since July. And we didn't have any bad hurricanes. You you just never know what kind of year it's gonna be with windstorms and rainstorms. Typically after we do have a storm, I'll drive all the streets and look at the trees to see if there's something obviously amiss. Ms. Backus had asked about that, how how often we check them all. Honestly, we don't go down every street every month or every year. It just kind of depends on the storm situation is generally where we go and do a survey of the trees. If we have a specific tree fall, for example, if you remember a few years ago, a tree fell over on Wood Street. There wasn't a storm, it was a huge tree, and it just went over. We did a survey in that area, about three streets, and it costs us about three thousand dollars to do a survey to identify specifically which of those trees were hazards, which weren't. So that's that's why we kind of just kind of eyeball it for the most part, just to keep within the budget. Now, based on these phone calls, and I keep a running track of all the tree issues that we have, we have approximately, we've got twenty trees that need trimming. I've already scheduled that trimming, we're just waiting on the tree company to do it, and that's gonna cost five thousand dollars. So you figure twelve and five, you're already at seventeen thousand, roughly. We got four thousand dollars left now. In that report that the arborist went and checked on several trees, there were a couple of trees where there had large limbs that fell on West Broad Street. So I walked and looked at the ones that I thought were questionable and asked the arborist to check all of those. If you look down West Broad Street, you'll see lots of little orange flags, and those are the ones that we check. Some of those are being trimmed, gonna be trimmed, but several of them need to also be removed. And of course, removals, really expensive. There are four large oak trees that are hazardous that need to be removed. There's also an oak tree on Main Street. And the brad repair trees in front on Hampton Street are another hazard. And of course, Clemson Extension has been asking everyone to take down brad repair trees because they're invasive species. They merge with local species and it ends up being one of the kind of wire patch type thing that's really not attractive or, if you look down the vine patch, you'll see some of it in those wooden blocks.
Okay.
In the in the spring, you'll notice it, because they'll flower and it'll look pretty. But if you were to walk through there, you'd not be very appreciative of it. So those are the the things that we need to get done. I got prices on all of that, just the, and so the removals and everything, so the thirteen thousand dollars. Now, I'm gonna ask council to, you know, just ship some money in my department's budget to cover these costs. Moving some money out of the Carnegie Lottery Fund since we're no longer gonna be using it ourselves. Five thousand dollars out of the advertising budget, five thousand dollars out of professional service, a thousand out of beautification, and fifteen hundred out of beautification board. Coupled with the money that's left over in our fund to cover these costs. Now, these costs, it will be, we will need approval to spend ten thousand one hundred and fifty dollars for trees R Us. And that will include removing the trees and removing the stumps. And six thousand dollars to Scott Construction for sidewalk removal and replacement. And the reason I include the sidewalk removal and replacement is when these, a lot of these larger oak trees are a source of complaint because sidewalks. And to remove the roots, the sidewalk has to be removed before they can take the tree down and get the stump around. And then, obviously, we wouldn't wanna leave it with holes in the sidewalk. And to give you an idea of how much sidewalk we're talking about, it is, on Hampton Street, it's about ten panels. And on Broad Street, it's fifteen. So it's it's long stretches. Because these are large trees, there's four, four, four or five panels at a time. And so staff is requesting approval for us to spend ten thousand one hundred and fifty for trees R Us, for removing trees and the stumps. Six thousand for Scott Construction for sidewalk removal and replacement. And these are the areas that we'll be just shifting money out of those particular accounts into the tree thing.
One thing that I worry about too is we haven't had a hard winter in probably half a dozen years. If we get an ice storm, it really compounds things because it's much worse than a hurricane.
Yeah.
Those brad repairs, the ones that haven't been split, will break, break in half. We'll lose a lot of the pine trees, the tops, and those oak trees that are brutal will bust up too.
Those brad repairs, the ones that haven't been, uh, split, will break, break in half, will lose a lot of the pine trees, the tops, and those oak trees that are brittle will bust up too.
And typically when, uh, based on what I try and do is if there's not an imminent hazard, I try and get the trimming stuff done, because that'll save us in the long run. Because if those large dead limbs are just trimmed down, that may cost us three hundred or six hundred dollars, but we don't have to take the whole tree out, or the whole tree doesn't fall on the street. And so that's why I went ahead and ordered the tree trimming of those si- of those twenty trees. Because I figured we've got more coverage.
Do we need to approve anything tonight?
Um, we, we need you to approve, um, spend, uh, moving those funds, transferring that, those funds to the tree line item. And spending ten thousand one hundred and fifty for Trees R Us and six thousand for Scott Construction for the sidewalk.
I, I just have one question, on the sidewalk part of it, um, well, two questions, do, do we go out and compare different groups to, to their replacement?
I mean, we could, I just called somebody that, that I knew would show up.
I'm sure. At that dollar amount.
I don't know of that small job, because you're talking about mobilizing down Broad Street to four, four or five different locations, and then to Hampton Street to another location.
And you were talking about the panels, you know, how many, like, linear support, but.
Uh, I.
You said it's about twenty, fifteen thousand panels?
Yeah, it's about twenty-five panels. And some of these panels are not, they're standard ten, you know, they're, I don't know, they were not, uh, they're not standard, uh, size panels.
So we got Trees R Us and the six thousand with Scott. What was the second company?
Ten thousand one hundred and fifty for Trees R Us for the tree and stump removal, and six thousand for Scott Construction for sidewalk removal and replacement. And it's all money that's already in the budget, it's just not in the line item for trees.
What's the tree line item?
Origin, it's a five ninety-two seventy-three.
Howard, I guess when I motioned this, I have this motion to approve the ten thousand dollar for Trees R Us, the six thousand for Scott Construction, and their appropriation of the funds needed into line item, uh.
Correct.
Second.
All right. I like the motion that we approve, um, the funding allocation of ten thousand one hundred and fifty dollars to Trees R Us and six thousand dollars to Scott Construction. And, uh, allocation of funds into the tree line item, five nine two dot, or dot seven three.
Five ninety dot two seven three.
Five ninety dot two seven three.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Mills?
Aye.
Spackes?
Aye.
Milton? Sickers? Okay. All the favor, motion is carried.
Thank you.
Please.
They should begin work probably in a month or so.
Thank you. All right, uh, D Business, uh, Dee, they're onto the Veterans Memorial Funding Request. Mr. Merrick, it's big to that, uh, Brandon Jenkins, who's, uh, the commander out of the UFW Post, had called within the last two weeks. Saying that they're planning some work at the Veterans Memorial, and they wanted to make a funding request, uh, to us. So I told her to send a letter with the rendering and what they wanted to do, which she did send a few weeks ago. You should have a copy of that, uh, for your file. Just note the previous history, in twenty-eleven, the city of Darlington gave seventy-five thousand dollars for the original, um, memorial, which was put in place, I believe, in twenty-fourteen, uh, May of twenty-fourteen. And then in May of twenty-nineteen, we gave an additional ten thousand dollars. So that's, that's our his- that's our giving history for the Darlington Veterans Memorial.
So what are they asking? I didn't see it, did I?
It's like there's four different levels, there's a bronze for a thousand, silver for five thousand, gold for ten, and platinum for twenty-five thousand.
So then they, they just want us to make the choice?
I'll leave, I'll leave it.
Gold, platinum, so.
I would be happy to support the bronze and the silver level, but to be frankly honest, um, last year, can you give me a total of how much we gave to nonprofits? Anything that's outside of our unscreaming?
You asked me a few hours ago.
Yeah.
Um, I know we gave five thousand dollars to Slidetown Festival, and we gave ten thousand dollars to the Veterans Memorial, and fifteen thousand dollars for, uh, Freedom Fest that year. I guess we missed probably forty thousand dollars, just, um, outside of our normal.
We're thinking of a couple more. Um, we've got a lot of expenses coming up in the next few fiscal years. So, as much as I wanna support our local nonprofits and these organizations who are doing great things, um, I have to maintain the, the security of the hospitality funds for the projects that we know that we have coming down the pipeline, and that's unfortunately my main interest right now. So I would be happy to be a bronze or a silver level member, um, as far as supporting this organization's new venture, but I would not be comfortable, um, you know, giving it the gold level or the platinum level. And just wanna, um, kind of make it known to the community that I'm gonna have this position over the next, um, probably twelve, twenty-four months. Um, because we just need to be very careful, very cognizant of where we're sending our dollars, um, till we really get a, a good concrete idea of what our future expenditures are gonna cost us.
So your proposal is five thousand bronze?
No, ma'am, I did not actually pick one, I just said I would be.
I mean, the silver, gotta be silver.
Yeah, I'll be happy to support either one of us.
Silver, whatever says five thousand, I think the thousand is, is too small for veterans.
Okay, I'd be happy to support that.
Well, let me ask you a question, why does it have to be a preset amount? I would think they would take whatever we were going to give them if we needed to split the difference between one and five. Am I wrong in that assumption? So, I mean, we definitely to, to Mr. Gardner's point, want to do something to help them and to yours, but I don't think we need to be locked into what the amounts are specified as. And I think if we did twenty-five hundred dollars, I think that's a pretty strong level, and we're still committing and we're watching our back at the same time.
That's the big part, you said we gave them fifteen thousand last year?
Ten thousand.
Ten thousand last year. I just.
But you initially gave them seventy-five thousand, so you're already, you're at eighty-five thousand already. So I'm just, I'm thinking, you know, minimize it, but, but anticipate it.
What do you say, I, I'm, I'm like the five thousand?
I can mention too that we've had, uh, a local, um, philanthropic person, I won't mention any names, but they have a foundation that they want to give money to the Veterans Memorial, they want to give it through the city. So that will be coming in the next week or two, about five thousand dollars.
Well, then why don't we wait until we know that's there before we do anything? I just think we need to have, you know, have multiple considerations, I mean.
What's your amount, did you want a twenty-five?
I'm just saying, if you know, if you, yeah, because you mentioned you would support both bronze or silver, and I agree with you, and I'm saying, you know, why are we pigeonholing into one amount? What we can do, say twenty-five, if we kind of, we're still contributing substantially, in, in my opinion, so.
I'm, Elaine wants five, Howard, Councilwoman Elaine agreed with like five, Councilman, um, Howard Dallas was like twenty-five hundred. Shall we propose maybe in the middle? Or you have councilmen have any opinions? I'm not comfortable with twenty-five hundred, I feel like that's too small. I'm sorry.
But you just said, you just said that you could support the bronze.
I could, but I mean, that's.
That's why I threw the.
I get it, I get it, I'm not saying that I'm two-faced, I am saying I'm two-faced. I'm saying that I'm not comfortable with that small amount, but I don't wanna give a large amount, um, so.
That's why I said silver, the silver level, five thousand, I mean, it's like half of what we did last year, which indicates, goes along with, with, we are being a little bit more fiscally responsible because of our projects that we have built.
So we're really not, but, I mean, we can go out of the way.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not interested in giving them ten thousand dollars every year, so that's what the, you know, that's, that's the.
What are you saying, Howard, I, I heard you say we're really not, what, what, I mean, I'm trying to see what everybody's.
Let me remove my mask so I can be more clear. So, as Councilman Gardner said, you could support the bronze level at one thousand or the silver level, level at five thousand. So I said, then why don't we go in, in the middle and split it at twenty-five hundred? That was simply what I was stating. You know, if someone thinks a thousand dollars is not enough, or, you know, ten thousand is too much, I'm just offering an alternative to the levels that they specified for us to go in there at.
Okay.
That's all.
All right, so it wasn't, okay, I thought you was indicating something else, that's your last statement. But I, the silver level, that five thousand, I seem like, I kind of, he's our veteran. It is a veteran, and we go be. It's less than what we gave last year.
Can they request a, a date by which these funds be due? Um, I don't believe so. Do we know what their construction timeline is? I mean, I know that, I believe the total budget for this project is around sixty thousand dollars, it seems like that, maybe Ms. Jenkins, uh, mentioned that on the comment. What we could do is, uh, whatever, I'm actually sat on, is have a nice letter written to go along with it, urging, uh, the mayor to go to, to give generous.
Oh, goodness. How do you feel, I mean, it, what's the other one you got brought on, is do you want the five thousand, or do you want something less than?
Yeah, I mean, it sounds like we're renting money, we don't know if it's one hundred and twenty-five hundred or five thousand. Um, we've definitely heard from myself, Councilwoman, Councilman Mills, or Councilman Miller, or Mrs. Backus, Councilwoman, have any comment?
Put it back, what, what our mayor pro tell, he, he don't wanna give none.
He's on, he's on. I'm, I'm all back to me, so I'm kinda sitting on the hand.
Oh, okay, okay.
He has concept.
Oh, my goodness. Always picking out and out. Oh, goodness, y'all.
What you think, Mills?
Well, I made a motion that we give it the five thousand dollars.
You might be two-faced in the future, I will go along with five thousand dollars. But you don't get to be two-faced again.
Do we have a motion?
I guess that's his second.
Yeah.
We're all second, if that was not.
Mr. Mills was, was second. Mr. Milton, did you second it?
Yes.
Who made the motion to give five thousand dollars? Discussing.
Elaine made the motion, I made one. I made the motion to, that we could give them, uh.
Billy made the second.
Five thousand dollars.
Mr. Mills?
I'm not gonna be the bad guy.
Mrs. Backus?
Yes.
Carter?
And I got one eye.
Aye. And you're in the frame, okay? The motion's carried to award five thousand dollars at a silver level for the Veterans Memorial Park, uh, wall to be constructed. All right, thank you for their service. It's a beautiful corner, a little great job. I might, I might add, this new, uh, addition we're gonna do, I think we put like twelve hundred more bricks up there.
Oh, my goodness, how much do you raise per brick? Or how much is the brick cost?
Two fifty, fifty dollars. Is it still two fifty, five hundred? I think it's two fifty, was it, was it like fifty dollars? I think it's fifty dollars per brick, wasn't it? I think fifty bucks.
That's wonderful.
All right, um, new business, uh, commercial recycling fee proposal?
Your night, the night, hi, Allison.
Does everyone have the spreadsheet that I submitted?
It is, I think, located behind the picture of the memorial, Veterans Memorial.
I just wanna get clarification before we get too deep into this. It says, "Commercial recycling fee proposal."
Increase?
And my spreadsheet, last month, I thought we decided that we were gonna bring the commercial roll carts and the commercial recycling before council this month, is that right or wrong?
Right.
Okay, because my proposal, or my spreadsheet has both of them, but Eve says, "Commercial recycling fee proposal," so I'm gonna make sure that we're talking about all of it tonight.
Yeah.
All right. We're talking about all of it, we have.
Three, three twenty-one and thirty-five.
That's right, we got three hundred and twenty-one commercial roll carts as of right now. And then charging, well, when we did the rate increase in July, um, I had proposed going up to forty-five dollars on commercial. And we, we, um, adopted twenty-eight fifty for residential, and it kind of rolled over to commercial, I guess. Um, we missed the forty-five dollars. The reason I proposed going up to forty-five dollars on commercial roll carts was because roll carts for residential, it doesn't cost us a dime to dispose of it at the landfill. We just have man-hours, trucks, and air and tear on the vehicle and that kind of stuff, that's what we had involved. But whenever it comes to commercial, we have to pay tipping fees at the landfill, so it cost us to dispose of commercial garbage. So that's why I propose going up to forty-five dollars to help offset that cost, or to cover the cost of the tipping fees for commercial roll carts. We're talking about three hundred and twenty-one carts, we're not talking about a lot of money. But that was why I proposed going up more so on commercial than residential. And then, we talk about the commercial recycled roll carts. We have thirty-five of those currently. We did have Pluff Mud, was doing it, now the city has taken that on, we're doing the recycling, commercial recycling ourselves. We weren't charging anything for commercial recycling for the roll carts. And the Pluff Mud was charging us eleven dollars and fifty cent per cart, so we were going into hole. Nothing was adopted, um, whenever we did our budget work sessions or when we approved our new rate increases, so we're still not collecting any money for commercial roll cart recycling. So, I proposed going up to twenty-five dollars, because there again, we have a truck, we have man-hours, and we have to pay to dispose of it at Sunoco. So I propose going up to twenty-five dollars versus not collecting anything, so we're not going into hole offering the service.
Pluff Mud's not getting the eleven fifty anymore.
No, sir, we're not, we're not paying, because they're not picking up carts anymore, we're doing it ourselves in-house. And what we're doing is, right now, we do residential every other week, and we're doing commercial every week. To be honest with you, we could probably cut back the commercial, most of our commercial accounts every other week and do it when we do the residential. I will kind of monitor it and see where we're at, we have a couple of businesses that would require recycling every week, but there's not many of them. But we're gonna monitor it and see, um, how it works out. But what we're doing is, we're picking up the commercial recycling the same days that we're doing the residential recycling, we're just putting more load on the truck. So, we're catching the businesses that are in the area of recycling for residential. Any questions?
Have you got any projection as to the increase in revenue for these three hundred and twenty-one carts and thirty-five, um, of the others?
I don't have a phone on, fam, you have a phone right in the table?
It's fifty-four hundred dollars and fifty-seven cents is, is your, is your increase for just the roll cart, not the, uh, not the recycling cart? And then you got twenty-five times thirty-five dollars, twenty-five times forty-five.
We were charging, we were charging twenty-three fifty for commercial roll carts, so if you take the twenty-three fifty.
You got eight hundred and seventy-five dollars for the commercial roll cart, for the recycling.
We're increasing by twenty-one fifty. Say it's sixty-nine, sixty-nine oh one ten, sound right a, a month?
Yeah, that's what I'm guessing, a month, extra.
So it's eighty-two thousand dollars a year. So, that's on the commercial. Is what we're increasing the revenue for commercial roll carts. But I can tell you right now, eighty-two thousand dollars sounds like a lot of money. But since I've been down there and you start, I can't tell you how many, we're tearing tires up right and left, we're spending... Every time I turn around, we're spending a thousand, two thousand dollars on tires on those trucks because the landfill is killing it. We just put tires on one of the trucks, I don't know what, how, two months ago, and we just replaced them again in the last few days.
All of them?
No, not all of them, but it gets them, I mean, but when you replace two of them, when you replace one, you gotta replace two. If it's on the same ice, on the, on the same side.
Is there anything we can do to talk to the landfill about this?
I will talk to the landfill and see if they can get us a better place to dump. 'Cause right now, we're having to, from what they're telling me, I will ride up there and look at it and see. They're telling me we're having to drive over all the trash and down hills, I mean, we're tearing the trucks up.
Yeah.
It's pulling the, it's pulling, um, catwalks off of them and everything else. I can't tell you, I've, I've welded the catwalks on the cherry pickers three different times since I've been there. Because what's happening when it goes down the hill is bottoming out and it's pulling the, the catwalks. And it's breaking, so, um, we'll have to do something different. But eighty-two thousand dollars ain't gonna go forward maintenance on these trucks.
Alright. Make a motion to approve? We have, this, it has to be a form of, form of ordinance, so we have to have first reading on the first, the second, the third, January. So we just, uh, agree to have a first reading on December fourth, December fifth. Okay, thank you.
So, you have the ordinance here?
Mm-hmm.
No?
So we're gonna have a first reading in the city center.
We have two of them, that's for that.
Okay, very good. Alright, um, department head reports, any, uh, questions from the department?
I got a question for them.
Okay.
Um, mosquito spraying. I didn't think I'd get calls in November, but I definitely have gotten two calls in November about mosquito spraying. Um, can I get a report on what's going on with our truck if we have been spraying? And what is our position if we have not? When will we start?
I'll take that. Um, we, we do not have anybody that's certified by D X certification. If we, we not sprayed, we'd be in violation of the law. What does it take against the most certified? Pat, you were the last one certified, any idea what that involves?
Yes, so they have to go to take an eight-hour test out in Columbia.
How long does that last?
About five years, while they did their C U's, continuing education, so it would be a non-commercial pesticide applicator, which is, um, fairly inexpensive for the city to do, 'cause we get it, we get by with non-commercial versus commercial, and they can do the same thing. So when I took it, gosh, in two thousand eight, uh, went down and took a test in about four hours and we're good.
Is it something to look at, of having a current employee sort of buying to do that? Yeah, I feel sure we can. What type of shape is the mosquito's truck in this?
Mosquito truck itself, I mean, it runs, it's, it's, I mean, they're fine. We cranked the, uh, sprayer up the other day just to, um, to service it and check it out, see if it runs fine too, so, I mean, getting it back on the road will be a problem, we just gotta get a certified applicator.
And we'll have to re-educate the public, we haven't done it several years, um, and I won't get into the minutia of that, but sometimes if they see anybody outside, they have to push a button and it just puts out a mist, uh, 'cause you're not supposed to spray around here.
You can't run behind it?
No, not like we did with the children, right?
Tonight, I'm talking to the child.
The issue we saw when we were doing mosquito spraying for ourselves, in the city, it's like before, we're out spraying two or three nights a week, well, the county quits spraying, so it's almost like the Alamo. If we're not doing anything on the outside of our walls, we're in here basically wasting our mosquito spray, because the county's not doing anything, they'll spray within four or five hours if they're coming back in our walls. That was one of the things we had going on, that's when we started using the Eldac, uh, the, those briquettes that we got after the, the, uh, issue with mosquito spraying. They have ninety-day or a hundred-and-fifty-day tablets they put in all the standing water. And these tablets, when the water is there, they activate, they kill all the water. When it dries up, the tablets dry up and they're not putting the chemical out. So that was the way we were actually working for a while, to save us on the mosquito spraying, because the chemical itself would run around three thousand dollars, and we could go through that chemical in six to seven weeks, and then four, four or five weeks later, with no outside help from the county helping at the same time, we'll overrun again.
We're, we got a creek runs right through the city, through the city, um, with the nice wetlands.
Yeah.
Um, so we've, we've got wetlands and creeks surrounding us. I mean, I understand it's an uphill battle, but, um...
A lot of it's perception, too.
Yeah. So, just maybe, I mean, obviously, if, as long as, um, winter's here like it should, we should be fine, hopefully so. But by next spring, maybe we can be ready to roll. I think that's, maybe should be our, that'd be my, is my position.
I think we should try.
But by next spring, maybe we can be ready to roll. I think that's, maybe should be our, that'd be my, is my position.
I think we should try. Alright.
Last question. So I wonder, um, Mr. Gardner, so what are the status of that study on Wall Street?
Council of government's doing the study on it, working with Daggers and Brown.
They're waiting on the engineering report to come from Daggers and Brown to go with that application, and then there'll have to be a, um, survey done, an income survey done at that neighborhood. That's what I, that's the last I was told, that was second week in October, I believe, the last time I asked about that. But I don't know, did, do you know if Daggers and Brown submitted an engineering report on that?
I don't, I don't.
Tell me, you, uh, say it.
'Cause see, what I read, read you the thing, what got me is that, you know, you keep saying a possible grant. I'm thinking that we were working on an application for a grant, we are. And that, and that word got, got really got on my nerves there, right? So it is, take that out. It's like, let me still, um...
Well, I think the delay was just throwing in, and they're doing a study to, to try to, they're doing something.
Alright.
I will say this, this, everybody in the city, I appreciate their support and help, because I don't know anybody in the city that just wants sewer or anything on any part of our city streets, I think you're all trying really hard to make sure all happens in every part of our town. Um, Mr. Kinsol, you, uh, give us update on the fire hydrants, I know the one on Broad Street, I saw that was repaired, I, there's two more.
They, uh, the, one out of Georgia Pacific was not a fire hydrant, we gotta put a valve in the line to take blow-off hydrant off for the construction. And they're working on the one on Broad, they're trying to determine definitely the height size so we can have valves inserted. Get a company to come in and insert, cut off valve, 'cause there's no valve on that hydrant.
So on Broad Street, something fixed it is?
No, I, so we gotta have a valve inserted in the line.
And then the one on Springs, uh, South Main?
They've gotta get the parts for it.
And the one on, on Main Street, on South Main, the one that was, that's, yeah, North Main's the north main, no, South Main. South Main's the one in front of the, he's a friend.
Yeah, they gotta get a breakaway kit for it.
Can you give us an update on Broad Street?
Uh, they've installed a small sewer line, they're probably thirty percent on the large, replacing, repairing the large line.
Um, town line still?
Probably a couple of months away, it's slow moving.
Okay.
But the weather has been cooperative, we have to track them, that's up-to-date numbers we got from the engineer.
And the well has been tremendous, has been a tremendous hit so far.
Yeah. Uh, on the, the fire hydrant, I was debating whether he even mentioned this, but I've got a call from a citizen, they were just all out of whack about the new, the painting of, of the fire hydrant. And especially with the, um, uh, cartoon characters. Some was, um, uh, they didn't seem to, and it, well, the question to me was, did you all authorize that? It felt like it wasn't, I said, well, I, I wasn't aware that there was an issue about painting them. So I'm, I'm asking now, was that something I missed, uh, about painting them, or how, how did that come about?
I was not asking all of that. The mayor might have a comment on it, though. I don't know.
Listen, a while back, um, most of the communities across the country are starting to adopt a hydrant program. So we had issues in town trying to get money and try to paint hydrants. Well, the adopt-a-hydrant program is something that you give the homeowner, they basically take pride in his hydrant. He cleans it up, he paints it up. And that's something we talked with Howard and we talked to the mayor about, because the garden club wanted us to go in and paint everything red in one color. If you remember, in two thousand seven, we painted the puppy dogs round and square. Now, after a while, people didn't like that. Some people thought they were great, some people didn't like them, we painted them red. Then the idea of the adopt-a-hydrant program came back to us, and it was something we wanted to do, and we had the option to handle it. Couple things, like I said, the owner takes pride in it, takes, we still test it and number it, and we don't have to pay for the paint. And we still mark it so it's visible. Now, there were guidelines put out, there's certain things they can do and they can't do, so there's no obscenities or things like that. But as long as they stay within the guidelines, it actually makes a town look pretty good and inviting. People can ride around, they can do scavenger hunts now, tell me where the penguin is. They can, churches can do scavenger hunts, chamber can do scavenger hunts, it was a great idea. And that was sort of the ball rolling in my area, talking to the mayor and, and, and when we started doing this.
Very good.
The county, the county has, uh, approved it today.
Not yet, we want a conference.
But they, they, they called me and told me they were going to, but I haven't gotten written approval yet, but they called and asked about it, um, and, uh, John has get, uh, precious about that also, about doing it in the county. So they, theirs, theirs is a little different, their top has to be a certain color.
I'd like to find Hannah, because she's been busy and I agree.
Yours is next.
I'd like to say, you know, we've had a really good response, all of the people had a good time, families had a good time doing it and trying to make it look well, um, bringing the community together, so we got three hundred and twenty-five, that's I think, instead or so, in the sides of the city.
I got, I got to go find.
Small mark.
I got to go find a fire hydrant on my street there, let me see what going on.
What's the status of, um, the project on between D and E and?
Please, please.
They're on the E end of Second now, hopefully, they were jetting it out, they, hopefully, when the next, they are saying they don't have that completed.
I'm supposed to take the camera down there in the morning, and we will see, I was talking to Michael, Michael today, and they've got something going on, so I'm gonna take the camera down there in the morning, and we're gonna look at it and see if we can figure out what they've got, so they can get it finished up.
What's the, what's the update on the, um, stormwater basin right beside, I call it the Marquette, the gas station at the bottom of the hill? We had a little washout right there, y'all had combed up, and now y'all have it.
You talking about in the sidewalk?
Yes, sir.
The state repaired that. There was a water line that was through the, um, the culvert pipe that went to the ditch. So the state went in there a couple of weeks ago, they said they repaired it and they backfilled it, 'cause that's a, I mean, that's a state storm drain. So, we went in there and looked at it, but when I found, found out what it was, I told them, I mean, they can, they can have it, I mean, they got the resources to do it, let them go ahead and do it, so. They went in and said they repaired it and they backfilled it, we're gonna see if it lasts.
Okay.
Counsel, I'm, I'm gonna quit now, but it seemed like I'm getting a rash of new calls about our water mill. The last question, the last one they were saying, we were, we were listening to y'all at your meeting, and they thought that it really was gonna go up, according to what they thought it was like eighteen dollars or something to that effect, how it was, and how did, did we get to, and I couldn't really answer it. I know it has a lot to do with our funding kinda stuff, and, so you're, it just, I want you to, it, it, sharply, a way that I can respond to the, to that, because I'm getting, it's new, it's new stuff, it's new people coming in. I don't know whether the bills are, I, I know mine is, but, you know. I was expecting, they're not expecting, uh, forty-dollar, um, increase as opposed to what they're thinking. I, I thought your meeting was, what I thought was eighteen dollars, I said, okay. What can we do? Is there any way we can revisit that thing?
We, we talked to the bond attorney about that, I'm waiting for an opinion on that from the bond attorney. 'Cause we have a bond that's tied into that rate increase, waiting for official opinion from him on that.
Oh, okay, that's predicated on the monies that we were receiving, okay, I got it. But I'm not gonna tell them that.
Possibly three months ago, um, I guess it was your department, Kinsol, they came out and put a cone on First Street, 'cause there's a, a hole on First Street. And y'all came out and put it in a cone, but, um, I'm concerned about when y'all gonna come back and do something about it. 'Cause it's a sinkhole.
Oh.
On First Street, in the street or on the side?
On the side of First Street.
Give it, give it more specifics, I can check, I'm, I'm not sure.
Well, you can't just have orange cone on the side of the street.
Is it between Joe Lewis and H, or H and?
No, 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 no. It's on First Street, when you turn off Joe Lewis, before you get to King School, on the right-hand side.
That's, that's what I'll check on.
That's it for me.
Um, we need to announce the passing of some folks here that, uh, have some service to the city. Earl Johnson Senior, who was the first African-American, uh, council representative from the West End, passed away. I could go, let's just go after his family, which includes Elaine Reed. Also, Eloise Meyer, who was an original member of the Williams Park Committee and a member of that group for thirty-three years, passed away the last day or two, she was ninety-five years old. grew up with that lady, she was a sweetheart, she was a good woman. I'd like to thank, uh, D O T and Mr. Scarborough and Mr. Berry have been real cooperative in working with us, along with, uh, Representative Williams and Joyce Thomas, and, um, involved in, uh, cooperative, trying to push together, get everything done. And Railroad also has been real cooperative, uh, and responsive, uh, of asking for help to get things cleaned up and taken care of. Mrs. Vakis, how long has it been for Farm Street? Fifteen years is what I think you said one time?
Fifteen years.
Okay. Uh, there's, on Farm Street, uh, Well Street is supposed to be taken care of, it's been over five years for that, we finally get response on that. Uh, they're supposed to be, uh, doing emergency order to get Well Street taken care of. Washington Street, uh, Mrs., uh, Hartless has been over five years, I believe, and they had a response. Farm Street, over fifteen years, um. As I told County, uh, the D O T, I have a problem with, uh, things taking time, and I remember before I ran for mayor, Mr. Milling telling me that, uh, sometimes that, you know, I like things to be done quickly and, and the government, uh, doesn't work the same way. But, um, fifteen years for Farm Street, ten months for, uh, fire hydrants, um, five years for Well, Washington Street, five years for Well Street, with five lapses since December, since December, since I've been mayor, unacceptable. So, uh, Mrs. Vakis, I will be the hundred percent to get Farm Street taken care of, and Mrs., uh, Reed, uh, the proposal, we'll try our best to get that funding. We can't guarantee anything, because we need a, uh, we need funding for all these projects, but we're after it. Uh, so please let everyone know that we're a hundred percent effort to get all these taken care of on a timely manner. Uh, but not fifteen and five years of, uh, and ten months for stuff is, uh, unacceptable. So, in my, in my books. I do appreciate everybody's support and effort, I think we've seen a, a great push forward. Uh, I think the city is doing a wonderful job, I think everybody on council is doing a great job, and I know everybody on councils, I tell everybody, none of us up here agree a hundred percent on everything, I don't agree with myself every morning. Um, so, um, but we work well together, we're trying to our best to push Jarnes forward, and I think we're getting good inches. And so, uh, thank you everybody for doing that, but again, um, you know, when we call and harass and aggravate you, uh, it's only because we want to do it, and, uh, I know everybody's wanting the same thing, but if you can write the whole checklist down and check them off and get it done, we'll all be happy.
New fire truck dedication next Monday, six-thirty at the fire park.
Okay, um, any, any further council comments? Alright, reminders that Thursday, Friday, November the twenty-sixth... Alright, uh, reminders that Thursday, Friday, November the twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty, Thanksgiving holidays, the city offices will be closed, uh, Tuesday, December the first, twenty-twenty, we'll do the six-thirty P M on monthly meeting for city council. You have a motion to adjourn?
On that one.
Thank you.